We are convened back into regular session after our executive session. Is there a motion to be made?
Madam Chair. I move that the board received complaint 21-01 and to hear that complaint on January 5th, 2022 at 5:00 PM.
Discussion. I will be working on the details and will be mailing out to the party, emailing that to the parties involved. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. And we have a tabled motion from one of you. Lost our connection. So.
Madam Chair. Does Emily need to abstain from that vote? Does Emily need to abstain from that vote even though she wasn't down there? Does she need to abstain? Yes. Let's see.
Okay.
Is anybody else's wifi not working?
Yes.
That's, that's the whole problem we're having.
Oh, I've got my board docs up, you don't have your board docs up?
Madam Chair, if you refresh, it'll go away.
Okay, I won't refresh.
Do you, you don't have yours?
No, I don't.
Lauren, share. If not, I've got mine. Do you have your board docs up? Do you have yours up? You guys want this one or I can just look? Do you have yours?
Yeah, mine's up.
Do you want this? Ask someone to share.
Okay. So we will go back to the motion that was previously tabled. There was a motion on the floor that was made by. Who made the operations?
I'll get it. I don't know.
Okay, there was a motion and a second on the floor to approve the revised all 2021 operations plan for COVID-19 mitigation. And we were in the discussion phase and Trustee Barry, you had asked a question of Dr. Yanni about isolation and quarantine.
Correct.
Any further discussion on that topic?
No, I don't have much to say. I don't have much to say. I've been pretty clear all along that my desire is to keep kids in school and to avoid quarantines. And I just appreciate the hard work by Dr. Yanni and so many people to get us to a point where we have a really good revised mitigation plan. So I'm in support of it.
I'm also in support of it. I have followed the data. I follow the declining case numbers in our county. Numbers of cases in our school district and in our state. And I am in support of the language to say face masks strongly recommended as well as the other changes that are presented in this plan. Trustee for you.
Madam Chair, I do wish that, I remember this here as well, because I believe this is the off-ramp. So I don't care of the updated mitigation.
Trustee Martin.
Madam Chair, I'm confused because we had some metrics that we were going to abide by that we're going to follow to take the so-called off-ramp. Into my knowledge, we haven't met either of those yet. Is that correct, Dr. Yanni?
Yep. Madam Chair, Trustee, that is correct. You know, vaccination is about 55% of the county or rate was supposed to be up to 70. And case numbers have gone down significantly. We were also looking for three weeks of being in town. And that was kind of threshold set initially, but I think the answer to your question is that, you know, with the uncertainty and everything that's going on in evolution that we're still relying on medical officials, county health officer, state, state health officer to make those recommendations for us. And that's their recommendation at this point is we're able to go ahead and strongly.
Well, far be it from me to disagree with the health officer. I do have, you know, a couple more questions. Vaccines are now available to the younger students. I don't know if it's a question or a concern. I just, I don't, you know, it seems to me that there are students that are going to be high risk of severe impacts to contracting COVID who for reasons not under their control, under the control of their parents rather, are not going to be vaccinated. And I'm wondering what, what about those kids, you know, masks were kind of the protection that we were affording them, and now we're taking that away.
Trustee Mark, certainly, yeah. That becomes one of those issues when we make that move to kind of a long-term. I don't, you know, so what's it, living with this pandemic or as they're trying to say, we will get away from pandemic. We're maybe more like a flu and cold season, but we're not there yet. The district still has the opportunity for students to work remotely. That is an option. We think that many of those folks you're talking about probably have already taken that option. From that standpoint, so we've got to be able to. We'll know, you know, the next couple of weeks or next 10 days from the board's direction tonight where folks are going to be going. So we anticipate if we go in this direction, there will be some people that will be coming back to school that have been out. There may be that situation where folks are saying, no, I don't feel safe with this particular strategy. I choose not to.
And one final question. What is the school district doing specifically to promote folks getting vaccines, both students and staff and otherwise?
And, Madam Chair, Trustee Mark, great question. That is part of that plan as well that we need to continue to put additional information out here in the next couple of weeks about vaccinations. As a result of this, we've continued to ask the question, do we have enough distribution pharmacies and other places to be able to provide vaccines for people who want? That has been the case that people have been able to get vaccines. When I've talked with the county health officer and proposed school clinics, for instance, she felt those were not needed at this point. Even though we keep hearing that nationally that some, some, some of the schools practice. But yes, we're going to continue to put additional information out there from the CDC on vaccinations because that continues to be one of those strategies that the CDC as well as the WTH are saying are very effective. So that's where we're, that's where we're headed.
When you say putting the information out there, what does that look like?
We've got flyers that are, I just, CDC has several different flyers that we can use. We'll put information on our website, but we also need to get that out into schools a little bit more. You know, I don't think there's, you know, we don't know if there's a lack of information out there. We think that people understand what's going on, but we'll, we'll give a better of the doubt at this point.
And I asked, just because my little niece got vaccinated right there at her school in Florida. Why not have school clinics providing vaccines?
The, a great question. I mean, and that's the reason we're asking that question. Our county health officer and our county health department doesn't believe they need additional assistance from the schools to be able to do that. That's the only response I have. And we certainly have to work with them if we're going to do anything regarding that. And some of the difficulties that Dr. Elias shared with that was that we have to have, you can't do student vaccination clinics like we did mask clinics with adults. Little more privacy issues that we have to deal with. And they're just not prepared to do that as the perception I have.
It strikes me as unfortunate given our inability to beat our goals for vaccines. But I understand that it's a complicated situation. Thank you.
Trustee Sorenson.
Madam Chair, I'd like to echo the conversations and the comments made by Trustee Johnson, Trustee Barrett. I'm the same way. I support motion to revise COVID mitigation.
Trustee Stanton.
Thank you, Dr. Yanni, for working hard to develop this revised plan and consulting with the county and state health officials. I do at this time support the revised plan. But I have a microphone. I'd like to just address the community. I am just made to see that our community vaccination rate is low and it represents a vulnerability in our community that we could have a large outbreak and, you know, not be quarantining healthy kids that have families and kids with illnesses. But I no longer want to put, you know, on the shoulders of our educators and our kids the burden of a community that is under vaccinated. I think socialization is better without masks. Education is better without masks. And with the availability of the vaccine and boosters, we really are protecting vulnerable parents, grandparents and children. But I would admonish the community to please raise our vaccination rate so that as we see new variants, because we will, we don't see large outbreaks that will compromise in-person education.
Thank you. Trustee Sorenson.
Well, I think everything that I would have said has been said, and I would echo Trustee Stanton in that I am somebody who's had three shots. And I still remember a very important quote that I saw on the news the other day. It was by a beleaguered doctor I believe down in Florida. One of the things he said was that the vast majority of people that are getting sick now are those that have chosen not to be vaccinated. And so I echo what you're saying. Please get vaccinated. I support the motion for our operational plan. I wish the timing were better, but it is what it is. The next thing would be that January, and that's not what we promised this, and I'm not sure that we would have any more information than we do. So I do support this plan.
Okay, any further discussion before the vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion passes. Board action to approve the budget calendar. Can anybody? You have none?
You have the hotspot.
Everybody had a chance to look at that budget calendar that goes through the process. Dr. Yanni wants to speak too.
Yeah, Madam Chair, trustees, I would be to approve the budget calendar every year at this time. It's just looking forward so that we have a projection where we're headed. I'll defer. I think Abby can be heard. Abby needs to add anything more, though, great.
Madam Chair and trustees, not a lot to add. This really is pretty consistent with the calendars we've used in the past, just updated for the next year. The one thing I would say that just leaves a little uncertainty is that we will be moving into Skyward. And so some of those timelines involve moving budgets and all of that into our new software system. So barring any issues with that, this timeline is right along schedule with what we've done in the past.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the budget calendar for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Second. Any discussion? Just to point out, the approval meeting will be at our regularly scheduled meeting in July. Sometimes we have pushed that a week, but it is in line with the second Wednesday meeting this year. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Now I'm just about to give back to my, I'm able to see it on my phone.
Chair, I, I can still access all the documents.
I can't, I can't, I'm checking on my phone now.
On this.
No, I have a re-creation. Madam Chair, the agenda is on the screen.
Okay. I wanted to look at the documents too. Okay, so the next item is board action to approve the 2022 annual agendas. Dr. Yanni.
Yeah, Madam Chair, trustees, your annual agenda is approved every December according to the agenda. All these items are put in there for to make sure that we are following our process every, every month of the year to make sure that we can you know, one, look forward to what we're trying to work on. We made from the current calendar, made some proposed changes, and those proposed changes are September. We put in there school board self-evaluation, school board goal, school board retreat. And those were previously in the August timeframe. So move those down in there to reflect, Madam Chair, what we talked about earlier this week. And then, and then the, you know, the other items. And again, bad items as we know that they're going to be taken care of. And this is, and again, the annual agenda is in accordance with board document for board governance. Again, it was the item we started when I first got here, I believe. It's been very thick, so recommend approval. If there's some other changes that the board wants to make at this point, that's, this is the, this is the time to do that because this agenda goes in, in effect next month, right?
May I have a motion? Madam Chair, move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Mark.
When are courses due for proposals?
I'm just kidding. I know that we said that we were going to do this, the board retreat. We said September?
Okay.
Is Trustee Sorenson okay with that? Because I know that he might have an annual conflict in early September.
Hopefully be done by September.
Well, as Trustee Fayers, brilliant discussion point after we failed and had about 10 dates that we considered.
In November.
Yeah, and then we ended up, remember, we started in August. So just, we might add the November WSBA conference. It's either March or April that the NSBA conferences.
Okay.
It has to open at the same. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Board action to approve change order number 17 for Richardson Construction New Slade Park.
Madam Chair, trustees, I do believe we have a couple speakers still on.
Madam trustee, this is Britt Morgan with Plan on Architects again. This change order is a value-add change order that the SFD will be paying for. And this is actually a cost of work change order, so it will be the actual cost of the labor. So the contractor will be tracking that and we'll do an adjustment change order once we get the actual numbers.
Dr. Yanni, anything to add to that?
Madam Chair, trustees, just, you know, we didn't approve change order PEL last month. That has been revised, not to date, but with the vision of the documentists. Your board policy does not permit a agenda item to come back at the next meeting, has to come back at another meeting, which we can't. Take a look at that change. I recommend approving.
May I have a motion? I move to approve the number 17 for Richardson.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm trying to like to point out that the substantial completion date has been moved back to, like, October 22nd. Thank you very much. We appreciate the work that was done by everyone to make that happen. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Committee reports. Dr. Yanni.
Madam Chair and trustees, a couple of things. In that uncommittee report, you have the annotated school, school board district committee list. Please look at that list and get with Janice, and we will make those final determinations in January. And so take a look at that. Need to confirm that last week. This week, so I, Ray Harold and Scott James are actually handling that one at this point. Trustee Stanton, is there anything you want to share from that committee?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Yanni. I just want to share with the board how much I've been enjoying going to meet and confer. That it's really helped me understand how all the puzzle pieces of the district fit together and the different roles of all of our employees. It's really given me a little bit of insight into what goes on in each department and how the decisions that we make in this room impact people. I feel so much more equipped to understand how these policy changes happen and how they play out in time. So I really appreciate being there and I would encourage anybody who can't have quorum, obviously, but encourage anybody to, to join me and drop a bit. It's really, it's really informative. I don't know, that's what you had in mind.
Your forum, yeah, I just didn't have anything else to add. I knew that there was some work going on. You know, some of the other work that's going on in substitute task force. I'll see there. Personnel leave committee met and I conceded that I would do one more meeting, but the committee did concede that we actually did finish our work in two, two meetings. Well, let me put this, two meetings in five years. So, so we are going to actually, in January, we're going to in a work session, we're actually walk through that, that policy, all the changes that have been involved. I think we've got a good policy. I think there's probably a couple of things that the board needs to weigh in on in terms of the control structure of that. But we'll update on that. Other, other committees.
Madam Chair, the layer-may-add-hoc committee on policing community has been meeting regularly. Last month held a series of public forums to gather input from the community. Results placed on Zoom. And then tomorrow and potentially next Thursday, if we don't wrap up, will be the final meetings of the committee during which we will take official votes on recommendations that we'll make to the city council.
For certain.
Other.
Okay, we'll move on to policy review. There's one listed there.
Yeah, just, you know, this, this policy we need, again, this is the policy that we're going to bring under the umbrella of our non-discrimination policy. So we're lined up. We anticipate that to happen this spring. Put that to the board here, hopefully next couple, two, three months.
Financials, board action to approve monthly financial reports. This is Conley.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you'll see our expenditures actually seem to look like they're tracking low. That is a bit deceiving. They're actually probably tracking right online. We have cut off all ordering for the sites as of November 5th. So our November financials look as if folks aren't spending as much as normal. But I just do want to say that is kind of deceiving, is that will most likely pick back up as soon as we open up ordering again in Skyward. Nothing to be concerned about. I just wanted to be clear that that is just a little bit of a deceiving number. Revenue is tracking right along where it should, and our food service continues to operate in the black along the lines of our donation to pay off the school lunch debt. Those will be getting applied to student accounts starting tomorrow along with most likely notifying the families of the contribution. And if they choose to write thank you notes, they will also have the opportunity to do so. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the financial reports as presented.
Any discussion? Trustee Johnson.
Madam Chair, Ms. Conley, just, so does this completely erase the existing lunchroom or school lunch debt?
Yeah, for all students, as of the date the district called, the governor, they paid off all debt for all students in Albany County related to school meals.
Thank you.
Everyone will start with a fresh slate.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Mark.
Can we just eliminate student lunch debt going forward now that we're at a midpoint? I missed you. I'll figure it out.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Trustee Sorenson.
Dr. Yanni, quick question. I don't know the answer to this. The free lunches, they go through the remainder of the year? Or is it?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Trustee Sorenson, I believe so, although I've lost track myself, but I do think that's correct.
Yes, it runs through June 30th of 2022, so through the entire remainder of the school year.
Madam Chair. Yes, Trustee Stanton.
Thank you. This is of interest of mine, and I'd like to watch kind of what other districts around the country are doing. There are some districts in, one of the districts in Fort Collins has changed the lunch program, so it's in the central budget. And parents don't pay for lunch. I think they sign up so they have kind of a headcount. But they've moved it into their central budget and just, if you want to eat. I imagine that it's very far from a possibility here, but I'd love to just, might just see that maybe we could move away from families carrying school lunch debt.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Board action to approve federal and state grants financial reports.
Yes, you have the report. Uh oh, no.
We do not.
The report is in your documents. I just was going to point out that we did in our school improvement grant for the year 2022. It actually will be going up by $2,537.64. Another district chose not to use those funds, and so they dispersed them through to the other schools. So we, that, that number will be going up. You'll notice in the, for year 20, we're trying to spend that out. So most of those remaining percentages are pretty low because that grant, those grants will end in September, on September 30th of 2022. And then you will see that for year 2022 grants that have 100% without us because we're just getting those. We haven't expended any money on those and hope not to for a while so we can spend out the other grants. And Madam Chair, I'm happy to take questions.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the federal and state grants financial report as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I should have asked this when we were talking about the $10 million. I know we've said this before, but how many years do we have to stay there?
We have until September 30th of 2024.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, sorry, I should have asked this at the same time, but I know that you mentioned that it can be, those funds can be used in, in a manner that aligns with Perkins.
Correct.
And so is that being applied towards, and I don't know, I might be confused, but it seems like the, the new program at Whiting does have some career technical assistance components, right?
Yes.
And so this couldn't essence support that setting up?
It absolutely can, and I have been working with Mr. Shu. We also have another grant that we just received $70,000 for that will go totally to that program over at Whiting. And so there's several different grants that, that have been applied just to that program. So yes, this one can, and there's quite a bit of money that we can help. So yes, this one can, and there's quite a bit of money that we can help grow that program and help it be successful.
Thank you. More discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. We've come to the end of our agenda. This meeting is adjourned. I wish you happy holidays, and my wish is for peace on earth.